Meeting number 1,604 to order. And as people are filing in, our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of meeting 1,603. And so moved by second, second by Danell. Does anybody have any?
I don't think we have a quorum yet. I don't think we have a quorum yet, do we?
Yes, we do. We have three people here in person. And we have one, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four. Who's?
Dennis, we have eight people, three in person, five online.
Oh, that's right. We got some sitting there in person, don't we? Sorry, my, my miscount.
All right. I would never call a meeting to order without a quorum. I think you can take that as a given. All right. I don't see any hands for corrections. So I will take a roll call vote to approve. Can you hear me well enough?
Yes.
Yes, I'm fine.
Good. Okay. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danell?
Yeah.
Janice?
Yes.
Hannah? Are you muted, Hannah?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm abstaining. I wasn't at that meeting.
Right. Okay. Welcome back. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
H. Dennis Sears?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane? Yes. Okay. Um. We don't have any miscellaneous correspondence in our packet. I do want to mention that some letters did come in requesting to be a miscellaneous correspondent. And I consulted with our attorney and our consultant from MASC about the nature of miscellaneous correspondence. So I made the determination that since you would all receive them, that they did not go in that spot. All right. So do we have a student representative report tonight? Hi, Jessica.
Hi.
We're eager to hear from you.
Um, I haven't done this. I'm not really sure exactly what to say.
Well, I think one of the things that we like to hear about is this is the experience possibly of being in school all time and any observations that you have.
Um, well, I've been talking to a lot of sophomores. And I think like kind of adjusting to the new six period schedule has been quite difficult. I mean, I know some people prefer it. And then there are also many others who don't really like it since it was a very kind of quick change. But other than that, I think it's doing pretty good. And we've been dealing with it pretty, I guess, pretty alright as well. But it's working, I guess. But it's just kind of like the shift is too fast for us.
Does anybody have a question for Jessica? Bonnie?
Yeah, Jessica, um, since you brought that to our attention, is there something, since you believe it's shared among other students, that you think we can be doing at this point to help? That would be helpful to you and your classmates?
I guess most of, I mean, I've been hearing like a lot of different responses. I, I half agree with saying how they prefer having shorter classes and how they like doing it in person. And then others are just saying that the change is just too quick from being in hybrid model. And I guess how the classes, like they did rather have three classes a day and how I think they like one fizz off. But I don't know, just kind of like a lot of mixed reactions with it.
Hmm. Well, I think one of the things that you could possibly suggest to your classmates is that's why we have a real support team in our counselors and principals. And it might be, you know, if that's something you're picking up on and others are, those are the perfect things to communicate to, you know, the district leadership. So maybe there are things we could do that would help. But thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Oh, I know that. There was definitely many students that were also interested in contacting the administration, I guess. Like they, I guess, wanted to talk about, I guess, just like new change. I mean, I don't really have much to complain about. But I heard from like some of my friends and they wanted to like, I guess, find a way to contact or at least like, I guess, let it be known the way they're feeling. But I'm not really sure how, how much.
Well, I would suggest as the person who brought it to our attention that you might, you know, speak to some of those students. They can make an appointment with Mr. Carpenter. You know, if it's, if it's middle and high school students, I'm sure they would be more than happy, you know, to be speaking with you and also our, you know, our guidance team. So don't let that, that request die. Go back to your college friends and let them know there's a way to make that known. So if you follow up, I think we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. Let them know. And yeah, encourage them, I guess, to like say something as well.
And we thank you for serving as a student representative and look forward to having you come back when it's next your turn.
Thank you so much for having me.
Is there a student spotlight?
No.
All right. So now, um, is there any public comment about the items on the agenda tonight? I see some public here. You might want to talk about our election, our memorandum of agreement with teachers, our handbook. I don't see any hands up. Do you understand where the hands up function is, everybody? So I'll be looking for hands up or a wave or something. Okay, so we have new business. Item A is our vice chair has had to resign. And so we need to elect a new vice chair. And I will take nominations from the floor here for vice chair.
Madam Chair, I move to nominate Art Pataki.
All right. Are there any other nominations?
Madam Chair, I move to nominate Bonnie Silvers.
All right.
Do we need to have seconds on these nominations?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You can put a name on a list. Is there anyone else?
And move to nominate Janice.
All right, Janice? If I don't hear from you, I'm, I'm assuming that you're accepted for nominations of putting names down, assuming that people want to be considered. All right. Any other?
Madam Chair, I move the nominations to be closed.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Jeffrey. Roll call vote on closing the nominations. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danell?
Yeah.
Janice?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane? Yes. Okay. So I think now we will just, if any of the candidates would like to say a word about their interest in the position and what they have to offer. I don't hear any political speeches going. All right, Art.
Well, in my previous terms on the school committee, I have been vice chair. I think I can do a good job on here. I'm available most of the time. So I think that's it.
Bonnie, did you want to say anything?
Um, it's really hard. I'm really torn because I, I believe that this is something that's important to Art. And I, I think because of that, I'm going to withdraw. I know that this is something that's important to him. And respect for his long service. I'm withdrawing.
Thank you. Janice, do you have a statement?
No, I am, I'm really, I don't know if you guys saw the, the awards. And one of the persons that was mentioned almost fell off the chair when she won. And I almost fell off my chair, Carrie Anne. I really appreciate the nomination. But I'm really not quite ready. I haven't, I don't feel like I've been doing enough work and enough real serious involvement to warrant that nomination. So put me in the same category, although I don't really want to follow Bonnie, but put me in the same.
Okay.
I'm grateful. Thank you.
And Dennis, I should add, thank you very much for the nomination.
And I hope this doesn't mean that nobody wants to work with me. But anyway, I won't take it personally.
Don't take it personally.
I think you should.
Okay, if you, in the, in the spirit of camaraderie, if you'd like to take it personally, please do.
All right. Trying to give a little levity because we need, we've got, we're all pretty tired out. Okay, so I suppose to be official, we'll, we'll have a vote anyway. And so this would be, are you in favor of Art Pataki for vice chair? And Jeff Blaufler?
Yes.
Danell Kelly?
Yeah.
Janice?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane? Yes. Hey, Art?
Thank you.
You have been elected. Thank you very much for being.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I know it's a cell phone number. All right. So now we have the approval of the memorandum of agreement regarding reopening of school, which you have in your packet, which I want to thank the people on the Personnel and Negotiations Subcommittee, the Teachers Union, Beth and our attorneys for working out an agreement that seems amicable. If anybody has any questions on it for the committee or for Beth before we vote, this is the time to ask them. I don't see any hands. So all, we're going to do a roll call vote. Let's see, can we do it?
You have to make a motion.
I'm going to accept the memorandum of, memorandum of agreement 7B as presented in the docket.
Second, that was Bonnie.
Definitely. Okay, I will do a roll call vote. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danell?
Yeah.
Janice?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane? So.
I have to, I'm going to excuse myself because of you.
Yes, yeah. All right. Uh, now, I guess I, I think I signed it already. Okay, so I have to sign that before we leave. The.
Did you sign it? You might have, I don't know.
I think so. Now, I don't see, I want to remind, well, I actually don't know how much you're aware of the situation that Lynette is experiencing with her health and her feeling that, that doing the minutes is adding to her load in a way that is, is just feeling overbearing right now. So Beth did some, and she did exploration of a minute company that it's their business to use minutes for school committees and other organizations. They did a test run with this organization who listened to a recording of one of our, our meetings and produced some minutes which Beth and Lynette reviewed. And they're feeling fairly confident that they're competent for us. So I'm just going to see if either Lynette or Beth wants to comment on this because this is something working for us and we need to approve this change in our.
So this group specializes in doing just that, minutes for different organizations all across. There are options that are available. You can have a person who would be like Lynette who logs into your meetings and takes minutes that way. Or you can send a recording and they transcribe the minutes from the recording. And the price differential is maybe 25 or $50 per meeting, but.
It's, it's $10.
Okay, never mind, I lied. It's $10 per meeting. So I couldn't remember. But the point is, the one, one of the ways that we look at this too is, you know, costing out what the amount would be per meeting for anybody's salary and/or stipend or whatever you would get in essence to, to do this work. And it's very, very similar. You know, it's not exorbitant or way out of line. It's almost in the same price point. Yep, that's fine. You can give numbers after. I don't have it in front of me. But I think what was most important is could they capture the spirit of, not only that, but meet the, the law, the requirements. So having, doing the test run, we sent them at the January 7th meeting. And Lynette did them and the company did them. And not really knowing us in Massachusetts specifically, they were very, very comparable. And, and so Lynette felt very comfortable leaving. I mean, this is, this is important work that she does for us and she knows us and she wouldn't want to leave the committee not in good hands. So she, she did do a really in-depth comparative look to see. And the product, I saw the product too, which I thought was well done. And this would also be an opportunity to, you know, maybe have the subcommittee minutes taken, which we haven't been super great at. So maybe, but, but we could do the, either the in-person. So they would be present and know, get to know us even better. Or like I said, the other option. So it's just something for your consideration. I think it's. Sometimes it's, it's nice to have a completely neutral person who's, who's, you know, listening to the information and following and capturing what's actually happening. They're timely. This is what they do for a living. So I think, I think it's well worth what we're spending. And it gives Lynette the break that she needs.
I have in front of me the pricing, which is very motivating because for a meeting up to two hours, it's $210 in person or $200 virtually. And then for every extra half hour, we pay $30 more. So I can try to keep meetings at two hours and save money. But that, I don't mean to be facetious, but that's, I wanted you to know the price range and how that lines up with what we're paying for Lynette's services or we would have to pay somebody else that we would hire. So I see Janice's hand up. I saw Dennis's went down. But I see Janice, Jeffrey, then Bonnie who want to comment. So, and then I'll take Dennis after that. So Janice.
And my question is, does this affect the way that we behave at a meeting? We have to identify ourselves. How does, how does it affect the, the members? If any, if, if anything?
It doesn't. Because this.
No, because. Speaking or who's doing something?
They're looking at you with the screen.
Your name comes on the screen.
Okay, okay. Question answered.
Okay, Jeffrey?
Um, one comment and a couple of questions. Just like if we do move in this direction, we got to be clear on Robert's rules of order. I think Lynette has been good to keep us back on track when like there's not a clear motion or whatnot. So it's just, our practice has to get sharper, I think. Quick question though. Is this service using any like auto transcribing service? And is there like a, like a human element that goes back and review it or is it automated?
It's human.
It's all a human? Okay.
Human.
Got it. I think that's enough for me. Oh, and is there a revision process? Like?
Yes.
There's something, so what, how does that work?
Um, well, in fact, we, we experienced it the, the round because obviously they didn't know this group. So they did their best to trans, so we corrected small things like people's names spelling. You know, the fact that in Massachusetts during a pandemic and Zoom, you have to do a roll call vote for everything. Those are things that they might not know. Now they do, you know? So you, they, I believe that the person, and Lynette, correct me if I'm wrong, the person who does the meeting, puts the minutes together, someone else reviews it from their company. They're sent to us. And then Lynette would still be in the reviewing piece as well. She's just not spending the time here with us, you know? So all of that would still be happening.
Okay, um, it's your turn, Bonnie.
Okay, um, couple of questions. And I think Beth, you answered one of them. So the process would be the person will either attend our meeting?
Like.
Or be attended virtually?
Or attended virtually.
So the person will attend it virtually, will still continue to do recording the way we do now. And that Lynette will serve as sort of the monitor to ensure that it is the way we want it and we're following all of the guidelines. And the cost differential is, what makes the difference? It's the two hours, I know, but the $30 difference in terms of virtual or in person? How does that?
It's only $10 more to be in person. The $30 for each half hour that you go over.
Got it, got it. And does that, and also will Lynette, will you be reviewing it before it goes into our packets?
Yes, yes, I will.
Okay, all right. You've answered my questions. Thank you.
And Dennis?
Okay. A basic question I had was, did we put this out locally to see if there were any candidates that wanted to perform this duty? I'm pretty sure that in the five towns, there are probably at least three or four people that would be qualified to do this work. And I, I think it's a shame if we haven't put it out to see if there's any community member that might want to, you know, take, take on this role.
We didn't.
So we didn't advertise or anything, right?
We did not.
Okay.
Um, you know, we did, we did have some kind of internal, you know, that we have lots of administrative assistance. And we did reach, you know, throw that out there to people for potential opportunities if people would be interested in it. And we didn't have, I know you find this shocking, but tremendous number of takers, like zero. Um, but you know, it's just, other than that, we, we kind of looked for somebody who did this on, you know, as a business level type of thing.
I, I guess since this is a, this is a national firm that's providing this service, correct?
They do, they're, they might even be international. I think they're out of Canada.
I'm sorry?
I think they're in part. I don't remember.
They're, they're not local. They're, they're somewhere else, right?
That's correct. The, the home base is somewhere else.
Right, okay. That's why I guess that, you know, I don't know whether it's, we're in a time where it's appropriate or not. But I, I would move that we put this out for bid for locally supplied services first. We can always come back to this other firm.
Is there a second to Dennis's motion?
How would that affect Lynette? This longer? Yeah.
I don't see a second to that quite yet, Dennis. Um. Let me go on to Janice for the moment. Is your hand up, Janice, or you just didn't put it down? Dennis, did you want to speak?
Talking to Dennis?
You.
You're talking to me?
Yes.
Okay, I raise my hand again. Yes. I wanted to find out, is this a contract? Is it for a certain period of time? Or is it meeting by meeting basis? How, how does it work? Do we know?
Yes. It, it's meeting by meeting. So.
Okay. Yeah. You're not committed to. Okay, got it. Thank you. That's it.
Bonnie?
Um, yes, this is partly to respond to the point that Dennis brought up. When this was discussed previously, I mean, this is probably over a year ago, maybe. Beth brought up a really good point in terms of it's much cleaner if we are not having somebody who might have vested interests in terms of, you know, the five towns. Because you've now got somebody who works for a company. They're cleared by the company and they follow the privacy rules, whatever it is. I think it's much cleaner for, when Beth had explained that, when we discussed it and that was brought up, I think it's much cleaner for the district and the professionalism, even though I would love to have somebody pick up some local employment. But then I have a question, if they're an international company or whatever, how do they vet somebody locally who can come in? If we want someone in person?
They don't come in, they never come in person. They're either virtual or, and that's how they do it.
So it would be like, we can see Lynette.
I understand it. I just wanted to make sure that I am correct in that the company does its own vetting then of individuals hired. All right. So I think it is definitely cleaner for us.
Can I say something?
Yes, Lynette.
Excuse me, Jane. The other thing they said too. Excuse me, Jane. The other thing they said too was they assign, when they assign somebody to our account, it's the same person that stays with that account. So they get to know the, you know, the school and they get to know everything and they get to know the people. So it's not someone different who's attending each meeting. It would be the same person attending the meetings that would be assigned to Southern Berkshire School District.
Got it.
Thank you, Lynette. That's important information. Jeffrey, your hand up again?
Yeah, thank you. Um, two questions. Uh, one, Beth, how are, um, how's confidentiality addressed by the company? And are we signing like a blanket NDA statement? Or are they signing a blanket NDA statement for executive sessions?
Um, I, I'm sure it's in the proposal. I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I can look at that. Um. Oh, this is the, sorry, um. Says all of our, all of our employees sign an NDA prior to starting. States that any information learned or shared during a meeting in specific to a board is sensitive and not to be shared with any parties outside of the reporting secretary, the editor and senior management.
Do they offer indemnification for that NDA?
This is what they offer. That's what it says in the privacy.
Um, my other question, um, just from your perspective, Beth, um, what's the time? Uh, is there a time imperative to move forward on this?
Well, I think just out of interest of, you know, Lynette, she's hanging in here. Uh, and I think the sooner the better. And again, you're not locked in for the rest of your lives on this. I think this is just a, a good way to, um, help everybody out right now. And then we can evaluate. If we don't like it, then we do something different. But it is, um, a group that is qualified and, um, and I think, like I said, Lynette feels comfortable and, and is very, um, you know, is very particular about who she's leaving us in the hands of. So I think, you know, that's valuable information as well.
Uh, Hannah?
Um, thanks, Jane. Um, I'm just thinking, since we don't have to commit to them long term in the interest of getting Lynette some relief, I'd like to move that we engage them for our next meeting if possible.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that was Hannah made a motion and Arthur seconded it. Uh, any more discussion? Uh, Jeffrey?
May, would you be open to, um, putting in the motion that there is a, um, NDA? Well, it is an Indian, it's fine with me. I don't need that.
Okay, uh, you had your hand up, Bonnie?
Yeah, um, I think just a one time, I, I personally would like to see that we would have it a little bit longer than that. I, I mean, if the company's going to do that, we're, we're already in the end of April. I, uh, that we have it to the end of the school year. So I, I, my suggestion would be amended to cover the remaining four meetings. And it would give, I think, give us a better sense of, of how this fits both in terms of their work.
Sure.
Hannah accepts your amendment?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The motion now stands, uh, that we hire Minute Solutions for the last four meetings of this year. And we're going to go for a roll call vote. Um, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danil? Genesis?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Carrie Ann?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis?
Was that Genesis or Dennis?
Dennis here?
No.
Okay, that's a no for Dennis. Uh, Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
So we have, uh, eight yeses and one no on that. Okay, thank you very much. This is very productive conversation. I feel like we did, uh, a good job thinking about that. So let's go on to our next agenda item, which is our, over a year, uh, work to try to, uh, get a handbook up on the website. So, um, I, uh, last, I knew, um, Bonnie was going to try to get a index on the front of it. Did that happen?
Nope, I didn't re-paginate it. Also, I never got any inserts for, we were supposed to have for the different subcommittees. That's still blank.
Okay, well, we just put it on for the next meeting. We'll get, I hope, because we're going to have a new member very soon. Um, at least we have a draft, but.
Right. They could, they could read it without the pagination, um, the table of contents. This is not the Bible, with all due respect. Um, but, uh, is it, are the chairs of the various committees the ones who are supposed to be giving me the filler material? I inserted the, the negotiations description as the chair.
All right, well, I will take it, uh, I will take it under my, uh, responsibility to make, to contact the chairs and, uh, request the information needed.
Okay.
Other than that.
And, and that would help, you know, I prefer to do that before repaginating it.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we don't have any unfinished business. Uh, we have a standing item here, the business with the district member towns. And, um, it does anybody who, uh, we have, for those people who are listening in, uh, the regional school district planning board has, has a member, school committee member from each of the eight towns that are involved in this planning process. Um, we only have four at the moment. Um, and we're on different subcommittees. Is there anybody from the planning board that represents Southern Berkshire have anything to say about what's going on there, subcommittees? And then I'm going to turn it over to Beth because there is a sort of a higher level committee that's been working on, uh, looking into getting some consultants on board.
So, um, the only thing that I was, I think there was actually a finance subcommittee meeting, but we had, um, we had a meeting here, so I wasn't able to attend that. The superintendents have the pleasure of attending every subcommittee meeting and, um, the regular board meetings and, uh, also the, um, the, I guess it's called the Funding Source Subcommittee, which is, um, uh, the Friday afternoon special, um, which is, uh, every Friday to, uh, right now, we're charged with, um, uh, looking at where we are right now is the grant that, um, we wrote for funding for $125,000 from the state, the regionalization grant. Um, we are now looking for consultants to help us with, uh, a variety of, uh, different pro, um, uh, studies, uh, based at the subcommittee level. So, uh, right now, we have put out requests for quotes. I don't know what they called it this, this time, um, but there's, uh, six different requests for quotes out there. Things like a transportation study, um, you know, educational consultants, um, financial consultants. Uh, so all, all of those are out. Um, they are on the, uh, regional school district, uh, planning board website, if there is one, or they're definitely posted on the Berkshire Hills, uh, one. And I think under ours too, we might, I don't know if it is on there, Lynette. Um, but the agendas for all of these meetings are on there if anybody is interested in attending. Um, and so right now, um, I believe the quotes are due in on the 16th. So this group will also be looking at the quotes in preparation for bringing whomever, uh, is, uh, whoever has participated in and wanting to support this group, um, to the full board, which I think is April 27th. Is that correct?
I haven't kept track.
Uh, we, we have, we have a full board meeting at the end.
Week, yeah.
Uh, I, I did want to add that, um, one of the things that the members from this school committee have really pushed for is public, uh, information. Uh, we all feel, so Jeffrey's one, Bonnie is one, I'm one. Um, and so is Danil. That bringing the opinion of the communities into the planning process thoroughly is really essential. Um, we have, there, we're just forming a communications committee, um, which, uh, in our, I think is a, we need to get that going quickly because as we learned last night, if you're trying to make a big change for education for people, if they're not engaged in the conversation from early on, um, it, you know, the outcome is threatened. So I just want you to know that we're working hard to make that happen, but there are 24 members on here and we seem to be a minority voice. So it's kind of slow in coming, but, um, I see Bonnie's hand.
Yeah, my hand is only up to see if, if you guys could check with Chris to see if there's any way, like when Beth speaks, you know, we all see closeups, but we don't see, and we, we see you as a spread across a big area. So if there's any way to close in on you when you speak.
That's it.
Yeah, Bonnie, the owl is going up our nose pretty soon.
Beth, not that close.
I feel like it's right back my nose. Yeah, okay. Um, so.
Can I just say something?
Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
It's fine. I just posted, um, the agendas, um, from, that's posted on our website and minutes that have been shared. So this regional school district planning committee that's on our website. Um, I don't think, I just did a Google search. I don't think they've done any search engine optimization, um, for the new website that the committee is going to be managing for.
Yeah.
But you can get it in the comments.
Yeah, we, we definitely think it's time for our communities to, um, be better informed. All right, so now we're going, oh, yep, Carrie Ann.
Thank you. I'm wondering if those of you that are, um, going to the regional school district planning board committee meetings, um, can you speak to if there, um, if there is sort, this idea that the merger of the two, two school districts is the goal? Or is it working from, um, a spirit of exploration to a whole host of potential outcomes?
The latter.
That, that, the stated goal is the latter, uh, of the whole group. I would say there are individuals on there who sort of already made up their minds, but the, the, the board is publicly stating that any option from just collaborative work all the way up to a complete merger are on the table. So that is the intention. That help you, Carrie Ann?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so now we go to subcommittee reports and, um, I, we do not have a finance subcommittee report. Uh, Jeffrey, is that correct?
Correct.
We have work to do for the policy, policy subcommittee and I'm going to turn this over to Dennis to get that work done.
Were you sending me something, Jane? I didn't understand that.
I'm saying you have a couple of policies that you.
Oh, yes, we have, we have, uh, two policies that are up for second read that we had first read in our last meeting. Uh, the two policies are, uh, EBCFA face coverings during COVID-19 and, uh, then, uh, EBC dash S, which is the policy on COVID-related issues. Uh, very quickly, the, the first one, EBCFA face coverings during, during COVID-19 was basically a gentle rewrite of our existing policy. And the only major change in it, uh, which you probably have discovered, uh, through your homework, is that when, when we first did that face coverings, uh, you know, we, we basically put an age limitation in there based upon the directives uh, that are written on the back of the policy from the, the CDC and the state and, you know, everybody and their brother, basically those were eliminated. And so that's the, that's the only major change from the policy as it exists for us today, which is that basically, uh, there, there is no age limit there in terms of, uh, of the, of the mask and face coverings that are, that are involved. That's one of the reasons why, at the end of the, at the end of the policy, it's kind of unique in that it has a, uh, first time I've ever even seen the clause used that the last line in the policy says, "This policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee." And, uh, uh, my understanding from the conversations I've had is, is that, uh, uh, that's basically because this is aimed, you know, pretty much strictly at what we need to be doing during the period of COVID-19. So. Go ahead.
I moved to accept, uh, EBCFA face coverings during COVID-19 to admit to policy.
Second.
Second from Bonnie. Uh, any further discussion?
Jane?
Yep.
Jane, this is Lynette. I just want to clarify something on this policy. When, when this policy was first looked at, the school committee added a sentence about gaiters and scarves not being allowed in the school. But this new policy that was just brought forward for the second read does not have that sentence.
That is correct. Yeah, that, that is, that is another difference because that's, that's what was not in the state revision. That was, that was something that we had put in, uh, for our own local use.
Then why was?
So does that mean now that people can wear gaiters and scarves to school instead of masks?
It means that, yes, our policy now in effect would, would not say that you cannot.
Uh. No. The policy would say that if it's not fair, that.
What, what you mean, our, our policy, Jeff, or you mean, I'm not sure what you're saying?
Our policy that we're voting on right now, this for draft.
Right.
Would say that you could wear a gaiter or a scarf.
It, it's not even mentioned, correct.
But.
And, and to be quite frank, I'm not unsure, uh, what, you know, what, whether or not there's some other definition in the, in the, in the cited periods, uh, pieces of, of, uh, of, uh, CDC and, and, and an MGL that's, that's actually written there. There, there may be something in there that reflects that, but I, I just don't know that.
Uh, Bonnie? And then, uh, Carrie?
Yeah, I'm withdrawing my second. Um, my understanding is that gaiters and scarves should not be considered appropriate face coverings and I, we put that in. And I, I want that to stay in. So if people, other people are happy allowing gaiters and scarves, somebody else should second this motion.
Okay, uh, Carrie Ann, you are, um.
My, uh, my understanding is that gaiters and scarves aren't, um, considered masks by the CDC or the Department of. or the Department of Public Health. So I, I'm not in support of us changing something that allows gaiters and scarves to be considered as, as masks.
No.
And.
The original policy that was voted on in September said gaiters, scarves, I forget the rest of it, will not be allowed. Because, because kids were wearing them to school. And so then the school committee voted on that policy and, and they added that one sentence in. It's on the bottom of the previous EBCFA that was voted on at the September meeting, September 2020 meeting.
I wrote that. I added that.
Bonnie, Bonnie was the developer of that policy change. And we, we passed that at, at that time in, you know, that was early on in the whole process, if you will.
And I want our policy to stay that way with the change, which means the extended use of masks in terms of age, which is what the CDC gave us and then Desi gave us. So that's why I have to withdraw my second.
All right. So does somebody?
Um, can I modify my motion?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm going to send, recognize Arthur.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm looking on the CDC website and it's very clear that the following do not fulfill the requirements of the order, which is scarves, ski masks, balaclavas, bandanas, shirt or sweater collars pulled over the mouths. So I'm happy to make a very elaborate.
Jeff, may I suggest that we just go back to what we approved in September with the one change, Dennis, that has to appear?
So moved.
Bonnie, what would probably be an easier thing to do would be to just say, you know, move to, move to insert that one sentence from our old policy into this one. The, the, the problem with this one is that it's so, it's very general. Cause it, what it says is face covering and face covering basically includes those three classifications. That we said, no, we don't want that.
So then Jeff, can we agree that what we're aiming for is inserting that sentence from our September policy into this motion?
From the last policy into this motion or the, okay, yes.
All right. So let's summarize. We are going to vote on this policy with the addition of the statement that face coverings do not include scarves and baklava or whatever gaiters.
Balaclavas.
Maybe to simplify it, we just have a motion from somebody, whether it's Jeff or Bonnie, to basically say, you know, make a motion within this motion that we're within to basically say, I move that we move the one sentence that addresses the, whatever those three things were, you know, over to this change.
Dennis, I'm going to withdraw my motion and let Bonnie restate it in, as her motion.
All right.
So nobody has to do it. Bonnie, I withdraw my motion.
I move that we approve this motion with the addition of what we, of the last sentence from our September vote.
Of the, what we will ever for after call the baklava sentence, right? Baklava sentence.
Balaclava.
Balaclava, right, whatever.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
Let's just be clear about our language and how it could potentially be harmful to other people whose baklavas and baklava both mean something for them culturally. So let's, let's get our language right.
Yep. Um. So can, I, I just seconded your motion, Bonnie.
Good.
And then my question is, Lynette, can you just, is that correct reflection of what you brought up as an issue?
Yeah.
The issue is, oh, I'm sorry, Lynette.
It's okay. I will look at the policy from September and see what was added on. And I'll make sure I copy that same sentence into this new policy.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Do you have your hand up, Dennis?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Listening to this, I'm not quite clear as to whether that statement in September, when I wasn't here to fix it, whether that was really in accord with what the CDC is saying.
It is.
Here, my, it's exactly right.
That's what, that's what.
It matches.
Yes, 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 it does.
It matches exactly. Okay, my hand now.
All right. I'd like to take a, can we proceed to a roll call vote on this? Everybody clear what you're voting on? Jeff, what else do you need?
I, I think just for context for people who weren't here, we took an extra step last fall because it was vagueness with what was an acceptable face covering and people were showing up with the face coverings. Sorry if I'm repeating it, but I think we're taking an extra step of just being very clear that stuff that the CDC is saying is not an adequate face covering. We're just making it very clear in our policy that, you know, don't wear something that's not considered a face covering.
All right. I'm going to go for a roll call vote now. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis Sears?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane? Yeah. Okay. Now we have the policy on COVID-related issues, EBC dash S, and we have a, a motion to approve. Anybody have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Art has moved to approve that. A second from, second from Danil, our original. Okay. Any questions for Dennis on this one? All right. I'm going to go for a roll call vote. There being no questions. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Dennis Sears?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane? Yes. Okay. We have approved that. So we're going, I don't believe Buildings and Browns has any things to report. Neither does Superintendent Evaluation, but the Community Relations and Public School Avenue Subcommittee does have something, some work for us to do.
Okay, guys. Sorry for the, the late send on this.
First of all, can you hear her or should I change seats?
You know, just have.
I'll just speak loud. Okay, all right. So we've been working on this as they have been in the past few years to send out a mailer to all the community members in all five districts that make up, or all five towns that make up our. Here's the, and it's an overview for them to have in their hands before they vote at the town meeting. So they know what the budget makeup is before they, they vote on it. This is it. You can see, we emailed it out to you right before, a little bit before the meeting. We went over it today just before the meeting and had just a couple tweaks to it. So sorry, we didn't have a, a chance to, you know, fix it. You can see our pen mark that those are the changes that we will make. We, it's very time sensitive. We're trying to get it out, just out by the end of the week. So the first town meeting is the first of May. So if you want to take a few minutes to, to look over it and, and if you have any questions on the changes that we made, please ask. We can discuss. If you can't read anything or do you have any additions or, or thoughts? But we're hoping to get, to get this out in the mail by the end of the week tomorrow, right? They have standby.
They prefer that we get it to the printer tomorrow so that they can put the barcode on and get it delivered to wherever it has to go. So they, the, the company would like it by then.
And that way it's, it's at least a week that they can, they, the town members have it in their hands to review before their meeting.
The first town meeting is on May 1st in Monterey, I believe.
I'm sorry, Bonnie?
Yeah, just for those of you who aren't on our subcommittee, what we have to do is have the authority of the full school committee to approve this on behalf of the school committee. And the superintendent obviously will do it on her behalf. So when we read it, we're reading it with the idea that we're approving it as a full school committee. And we're approving the expenditure at the same time. Do you have an estimate of the expenditure, Beth?
I believe it's, it, it's $800, $800 for the printing. And then there's a charge to get it to, to drop it at the appropriate town. So I think it's $75 to be delivered to whatever location for distribution. So that, that's what they have. I'm looking for the quote. I think Lynette sent it to me. Here it is. Amazing. All right. So it is, the number is about 4,000 that we send out. It's for a two-sided flyer, it's $875. We have the, there's a bundling cost. I forgot about that. I apologize. Bundling in hundreds is $80. And if, if we deliver to the post office, there's a charge of 75. If someone wants to deliver them to the post offices, it, you save the $75 for the, those two.
And what about the cost of mailing?
That, this is all in it. This is it.
It's all in it. So that's even, I think that's coming out even less than a week. This was about $4,500.
I think it's.
The first time.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're basically have to approve, what, if you can do a quick adding, we have to approve that as well.
I don't know how many post offices it's going to. I gotta do all of them.
Lynette, did you want to say something?
I think they just, when they say bring it to the post office, I think you could just bring it to the one post office in Sheffield. I think, and that will be just $75. I don't think we have to take it to each post office. I don't know. I, I didn't ask him that question.
Is Jeff, your hand still up for a reason?
I just wanted to make sure we had time to read.
Okay.
I'm still reading.
No.
It is what, it's what it was.
Is there anybody who needs further time? Anna, you good? All right. I see. You're all right, Art?
Yeah.
Okay. Take it away. Oh, so I'm looking, well, any, any, anything that people need?
Um, in, in the, on the first page, second column, where we did, we said FTE would be capitalized. T has to be capitalized.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we're calling for any changes at this point so that we can get a motion to approve.
No one has any other changes I need to approve the budget mailing? Oh, along with.
Ms. Anderson? Jeff?
I just want to be clear. Anything that has a line through it is admitted text?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
On this, on the second page, the left-hand column, the community, should it be internship partners?
Well, listen, I told you this was my non-creative juices thought. But then I had, originally in my head, it was community internship partnership, but I felt like it was getting a lot of letters.
What about community internship partners task force? Because they're partners for our internships.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. Put the ship in the other word.
Yeah, put the ship, yeah, do that.
Moving the ship, everybody, moving it, moving the ship.
That's very good. Okay. So we have a motion.
Who made the motion?
I moved.
Okay, I'll second Jeff's move.
Sorry. I moved to accept as amended, it just now.
Okay. Excuse me one second. I'm confused. Was there a previous motion before you made one, Jeff?
No.
No.
Jeff, would you be willing to add into your motion at the cost of $4,150 so we don't have to have another motion?
At the cost of 4,000, what?
$150.
At the cost of $450.
$1,500.
At the cost is specified by Jane.
No, I need to know the amount for the motion.
How about this, at the cost of up to, we're authorizing up to $4,500.
I'll accept it.
And then I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion that's on the floor is we are accepting the mailer as edited at a cost of up to $4,500 cost. All right. So a roll call vote. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dennis Sears?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane? Yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much.
The committee for, for the work. The committee for the work. And Bonnie, I'm wondering if you need to say anything about the personnel and negotiations subcommittee?
I will say the following, we had authorized approval for our chair to sign the MOA. And that will take place tonight, based on the full school committee approving the MOA. That's it. Unless, Beth, I forgot something, Beth?
Nope, you're good.
And you're gonna watch me sign it right now.
Okay, there it is.
Okay. Chris, focus in on her now.
We want to close up. Okay, it is done, all right.
Thank you.
So now I have a chairman's report. I wanted just to mention that this is a month that has three meetings in it. And I'm trying to get an ADL, anti-defamation lead training for us on that last meeting of the month, which is the 29th. And I'm aiming to have them agree to a 5 to 8 p.m. slot. And should that fail, I may ask you to change this 29th date to one that they can offer us. I won't sign us up for anything unless I've gotten back to you to make sure that it's a good time and date for everybody. Just wanted to keep you up to date on that. So we had a really, our first community conversation last night. There was sort of a collaboration between the administration and the committee, so it wasn't an official school committee meeting, because we were really there to be listening as well. I offered to moderate so that Sandy and Beth and Julie and Charles could be free to respond to questions. The meeting was very spirited. We, I think we all learned a lot, it was well-attended. Some of the things that came out of it that stand out to me are the, that probably needs more attention is discussion of multi-age classes. As a pedagogy. Looking at our communication networks that didn't work well in this particular situation. So we can better understand how to avoid this in the future. There seemed to be kind of a void in the community's understanding of our process, of our district visioning, our stat strategy for district improvement, how our administrative team processes things over time in line with our this visioning that we've done. And it seems to me that we need to try to educate our community on how these decisions come to be and figure out some way, they are, you know, the whole community is involved in the visioning process, but that happened four years ago or five, is it four or five now? Four, I think it happens every five years or so.
No, it happens when you feel like you want to revisit it, some people go 10 years or whatever, but I feel like it is your North Star. I think we revisit it, I think we try to revisit it every year. Because we, you know, you don't redesign your strategy for continuous improvement without relooking at what we committed to, so.
So I think that we need to share that process and have better understanding. Also, some understanding about the role of the school committee in decision-making, our fiscal responsibilities, and our looking at educational excellence. And just the difficulty of serving five towns, trying to bring the district into some new thinking that actually isn't as new as it seems, but for instance, K to three continuing. So we were really glad to have that opportunity, it was not easy for anybody. And we are going, as Beth said earlier, she's gonna supply us with some more information to support the reasoning that went into this process. So that's as much as I can say about the outcome, because nothing, there isn't anything concrete that we can say this or that. I want to thank the people who are on, who are here, who attended. I want to thank, I just feel grateful that it happened, even though I'm exhausted from the process. And I am very concerned about the regional school planning board. And I really hope that more people become aware and get involved in thinking about what they want for education in their communities. And not to be too passive about letting things go on that you may not be happy with later. So that's my statement, it's longer than I usually think. Carrie Anne has something to ask or say?
Yes, thanks Jane. Um, I, the experience from last night was very eye-opening and concerning. It left me feeling very concerned about the information that I had available to me when making the decision to support the fourth grade being moved out of New Marlboro Central into Undermountain. And I would like for us to have a future agenda item where we discuss the process. And I understand that Beth is going to provide us with more information and facts about this decision. But there were, there are a number of conflicting pieces of information that I, I have now. And the hearing from both, from multiple teachers in, in the school and parents, it was just really brought to my attention how backwards the process was of it's of making the decision and then implementing and communicating it out, as opposed to getting public feedback and building capacity to reach a decision. I'm not in any way against the final decision necessarily, but I do think that we have a problem with process. And I spent some time today going through our policies to see what our policies are about process regarding community engagement, the budgeting, and our school committee goals. And I think that there are a number that we've run into some problems with in the process for this decision-making. And I'd really like for us to make this an agenda item for our next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, well, it wouldn't, if we, our next meeting may be the ADL meeting, do you want me to postpone that?
Next full meeting, nope, next full meeting.
Okay, all right. So Dennis is next?
Yeah, just a comment about last night's meeting. One, you know, for those of you that weren't observing or were there in some fashion, you know, your chair handled a very tough situation very well. You should be aware of that. It was, you know, she suddenly found herself and Beth both, and they both, you know, did an excellent job last night. They, they found themselves in the middle of a, of a, of a food fight, is about what it amounted to, I guess for lack of a better word. And kind of thinking about it overnight, one of the things I, I think that, that, that where we need to make some better communications in this outstanding issue, because this is an issue that is not going to go away overnight, that's for sure, is, is that, that there seems, it's a, there's, there's miscommunications in terms of the, the people that were, you know, there basically didn't seem to, in my view anyway, have a grasp that the, the vision that was being worked on was one that was targeted to be good for all of the children in all of the district. And I, I think that's one of the things that we need to kind of get some focus on, in that, that, you know, although we have these outlawing, outlying locations, you know, yes, a change that may not be popular in one, may actually be good for more of our students and kids overall, if it's a change that's being made really to help the entire district. And I, I think that was the key message, that I, I don't think, they, they may not have been receptive enough to, to, you know, to take it anyway, but I think we need to try to build some muscle around that as, you know, we are a district, we're, we're not town A, B, C, or D. And we're responsible for trying to make it the best possible educational environment for all of the kids of all of the towns. And that means that, you know, not all the towns are necessarily going to be treated equally over time, period.
Thank you, Dennis. Hannah?
Thanks, I, I'll keep it brief, since I'm encouraged to hear that we can put this on our next agenda and really discuss it. I, I just wanted to reiterate some of what Carrie Anne said, I would like to revisit it. I think, being new to the school committee, and also just personally, I, I think unfortunately, when it initially came up, I didn't realize how big of a change this was going to be and kind of how it came about, or who did and who didn't know about it. So personally, I've heard from many parents, a lot of the same things that were in the letters that were distributed to us. And so I'd like to look at how we communicate decisions, but also how we involve the community when, like, as decisions are being made. And, you know, just, I would like to also reflect that I, I do think it's important that we have a vision of all the students, but the students that we're discussing are part of all of those students. And we did even hear directly from one of them that all of their classmates are really hoping that we'll reconsider this decision. So thanks.
And I would like to not turn this into too long a discussion, Bonnie, if you want to add something and then we'll go on.
Yeah, I think we're treading in, and this is not on the agenda for tonight, and given the fact there'll probably be a lot of people would want to speak to this if it were on the agenda, I think we should not continue this discussion. It's now been noted to be put on a future agenda.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Sure, so since we last met, the most exciting news that we have is that we're back to school. Full-time, five days a week, pre-K through 12, which is pretty amazing, seeing we don't really have to be in that space from, at the middle and high school level. Our original date, as you all know, was April 5th. And that week prior brought us some unprecedented numbers of positive cases, both at the faculty and staff level and at the student level, more than we've seen throughout the pandemic. We consulted with our local medical professionals, school physicians, boards of health, public health nurses, and school committee sought advice and, as well as considering the local promise that we made to our families to keep people safe. So we recommended a close through April 9th in an effort to slow the spread. We did not file a waiver with the state because we were not changing our educational model, we were in fact exceeding it. We worked with the state and, and consultation reviewed all of our processes and protocols. And we were able to return our elementary schools with a few classroom exceptions on Wednesday the 7th. So on Monday, April 12th, we brought everybody back and we, we got to have the full experience. We had faculty and staff commenting on how great it was to have the energy back on the buildings. I see kids skipping outside my door all day long, really enjoying the outside experience. Everybody's just really happy to be back, and we're really happy to have all of our students back around us. Let's see, we have lots of after-school programs and enrichment programs in place, partnering with our community members. We're working with clubs, Greenagers, robotics, I believe, is going. We have sports, we are rehearsing for a musical, so there's tons of activity going on on the campuses, and it's really, really nice to see. Another more mundane news, I will say that we did have our, oh, let me go back, I, I did want to mention, we also met with the nurses and we have revisited and retightened up all of our protocols to reflect any changes in the guidance as we move forward. And we're going to make sure that everyone is following our safety protocols that we have in place. So I want to make sure that I said all of that. We did have our access and efficiency fund, which is our, we, we call it our E and D fund, which is our reserve fund that was certified. It was certified at just over $608,000. We don't have any business activity for tonight, so they will present the full E and D certification at the next school committee meeting, full school committee meeting. And also, I just wanted to keep the full committee abreast of the fact that the FY '20 audit is currently underway. We had a board of directors meeting for MARS, which I am a new board member of. And it looks like I may be tapped to be working on the regional schools, rural schools initiative in my capacity on the board. So I look forward to helping get us a little more on the map than we currently are in, in the rural schools mix, shall we say, so that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Jeffrey, you have a question?
Beth, first, congratulations on the MARS appointment on the regional schools. That's, that's good, and hopefully can shed some more light on the funding inequities that we have. Um, the last couple of weeks have been really challenging, I think, for the whole community, whether it's teachers, students, families, administrators, school committee members. And I think kind of looking back, it's kind of like, this year has been really crazy, but I, I'd love to see if we could actually have lessons learned as an agenda item. And can you give us an update about how are we improving our public health processes for the future? And how, what are these things? If you could just map it out for us, not now, but just so we can, again, educate community members and kind of see where the progress is on that, also educate ourselves as well. I want to thank you, this has been a really tough year, and I can't extend my gratitude enough to the administrators for going above and beyond on a daily basis to try to keep this district in the right direction, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have, oh, Carrie Anne?
Thank you, um, and I'm sorry if I missed this answer in some of the emails that happened, but there was the question about what was being counted as learning days because of us not filing for the waiver. How did that end up getting resolved?
It hasn't been formally resolved yet, but I've been, I'm on a first-name basis with pretty much everybody in the state, every office that they have. I've spoken a lot with the associate commissioner, and I think part of it was really discussing with them the why, and I think they understood the why we did what we did piece of it. So I'm very hopeful that at this point, we all work together to come up with a plan to get students in as quickly as we can. And I think we might, we might just be fine, but I don't, you know, they haven't given a formal decision.
The work in progress.
Thank you.
So Bonnie and then Janice?
If you have some things that you already know will be happening. If you, um, have some, eh, things that you already know will be happening in terms of this summer. Can you give us any update on those activities?
I think that's going to be.
I think Sandy's got it covered in her report, so I didn't want to steal her thunder.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Dennis?
Well, I want to say, Beth, I, um, thank you for that letter that you sent. I thought you really made a case. Now you can go to law school.
No more degrees, no more degrees, please, yeah.
Yeah, well, we have a highly capable leader here who is a business manager and a superintendent, and now we want her to be our lawyer too.
That would be cost-effective, but, um.
Yeah, I think we won't ask that. Um, so I turn it over to the director of student services.
Right, thank you. Good evening. I don't know if that owl comes my way.
Can you hear her?
Barely.
Not turning, not turning.
Hello, owl. It's not coming my way. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Good evening. I hope it, can, I hope you can hear me. I'll talk really loud. Um, so in my report, you can see that we are busily planning the summer program, which is going to run, um, across the district. From June 29th to July 29th, Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays. There's a, um, kind of a variety of, variety of things are happening. Extended school year services for special education students who, um, have those services within their plans. We're also, we've also identified elementary age students for, um, enrichment activities. And, um, direct reading and math instruction, which will run concurrently. Similarly, we're doing the same at secondary and I don't want to speak for Jesse, but I know that they're looking at credit recovery. And also additional supports for students, um, as a result of lost, some lost learning due to the past year. Uh, into, so that will run, I think all programs will run from 8:30 to noon. Um, lunch will be provided during that time by the district. And at noon, we are working right now with, um, Flying Cloud and other local. Organizations and nonprofits to offer to some students. We probably wouldn't be able to offer it to every, but to quite a few students, um, an extended enrichment STEM activities. And an outdoor educational experience. So the hope would be that we have essentially a six and a half hour day. Um, offered Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays, again, for five weeks. Um, with transportation provided and lunch provided to all. So, yeah, I see a candle.
Yeah, Bonnie?
Sandy, that sounds great. I have a question. How are we making sure that all of our families know of what opportunities? Are available to them, um, and that, you know, people don't fall through the cracks?
So we have already in the special education department, families have been notified. About the program that's happening, you know, within the district. Um, we've identified the students at the elementary level and are going to be sending out letters to notify parents. And invite their children to the program. Secondary, I can't speak to right now, but we're talking about it. Same thing, we're sending letters. Uh, and then we're, we're still working, um, out the details for the second part of the day that starts at noon. And we're going to, um, identify students and invite them to the additional portions. Now, we have information about, uh, some families who have already elected to do other. Things for the summer for their children. So we are looking at that and trying to kind of pull it all together. So we can offer as many students as possible, as many families who want to participate, um, and experience this summer.
What about the students who are in regular education? How are those families finding out?
Elementary, we've already, I, we have a whole list. We reached out to all the teachers. Um, and if there was an academic or social need, we identify that. We have quite a list. I forget exactly how many are on it, but it's probably 60, 60 students. And now we're sending those letters out and they're doing the same as the secondary level.
And at, um, New Marlboro and Egremont?
We reached out to all. It will happen here on this campus, but we reached out to all, all teachers about that.
Uh, Carrie Ann, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Sandy, just to make sure that I understand correctly, there's just two questions. Um, but what we were just saying in terms of students that were identified and had letters sent out to them. Does that then mean that all students aren't eligible to participate?
Well, e- every student was considered, but we don't have the capacity to have every, the staffing capacity. So we had.
So this summer program is not open to the entire district?
It is open to the entire district, but we had to ultimately scale it down. We would not be able to offer 670 students just because we, by virtue of staffing. So we had to really look at that.
So then just the ones that are invited?
Which is going to be quite a number.
Invited on the basis of need.
And it's not just special education.
And I'm sorry, I haven't had the opportunity to read your report yet, but, um, is that criteria listed in your report?
The criteria about the academic or social emotional need?
Is that? Well, just like, uh, uh, of, in terms of who's getting chosen, like, uh, how those, how that's, um, being evaluated?
We reached out to teachers, we've looked at individual students. Administration obviously has information from conversation to families over the course of time. Um, with the special education pieces and their plans. And we broadened out even to students beyond where it's in their plan. So this is going to be a far larger program than ever. Far larger.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Jenna?
Okay, a couple of questions, Sandy, please.
Add some different?
I'm sorry, while I'm thinking of it, you, you remember, we're collaborating also with Flying Cloud, who ran clubs. So they also are working with us because they have scholarships for students, for students in our district. So I just wanted to say that. So whether or not they're participating, um, in the program that the district is offering, there are offerings for other students. We're, we're trying to work this all out to make sure that anybody that wants an opportunity has one.
Okay, Jenna.
So then, eh, so, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, finish, Carrie Ann. Finish up.
Um, so then, thank, thank you, Jenna. So then, um. I guess I'm, I'm, I just get concerned in terms about like, who then doesn't become eligible in terms of various. Of access to this incredible opportunity? And so then, um. It sounded like then low-income families could potentially go through Flying Cloud. If their child wasn't on the list to be able to, um, access this program. And get scholarships through, uh, through the nonprofits.
Maybe the case, but it also may be that they've already accessed the program for years and. We're working with various funding sources to see if we can get additional, um, funds available to provide other opportunities. We're talking about sending students to camps. Um, we, we often utilize Camp Russell, which is enrichment, which is a great experience for a number of kids. And we're trying to broaden that experience. So we're really adding in a lot of things. But we do have, you know, limitations because we can't, you know, make, um, people work during the summer. So we have to make sure it's safe and possible.
Right. But in terms of the funding, don't we have the SR2 pot of funding to be able to support this program?
Yeah, yeah.
The program is free.
It's free. Anybody could come.
Program is free, it's, the problem is getting staffing over the summer.
And I want to just say, many people have stepped up to the plate on this. And this is a, a challenging, it's challenging every year to staff during the summer. And I think especially this year, I think people are looking to maybe, um, get a little release and get away. So people have already reached out to us who have been invited and said they're making other choices. Um, but, uh, our staff members have really stepped up to the plate and we've been able to, um. You know, we have to have a nurse on site, you know, all of these things have to happen. And we've been able to secure all the key players. Um, so we're going to work from there.
Okay, Jenna?
Okay, um, Sandy, if possible, can you tell me the numbers of special ed kids who will be invited?
Oh, so they've already been invited. And we invited, I don't want to miss speed. We sent these letters out. I think it was 65.
Out of a total of how many?
125.
Okay, it's about half. And then, um, how many additional slots are there? I mean, for regular ed students?
We're not looking at it like that. We're looking at what we can safely and reasonably do. So again, I just need to say, not everybody wants to come. Or they've made other choices. So once, once we get these letters back or we get a response that says, you know, thank you, or a phone call where they've chosen something else. Then we can expand it out and offer to more.
You know, all I'm trying to get, Sandy, I'm sorry, all I'm trying to get is a total of how many students are going to be served. I have an idea, not exact, of how many students will be served with a summer program.
I mean, I don't know about the secondary because they haven't told me about their. They're working on their number, so I don't want to speak to that. But down here, we're probably, we're hoping to serve around 100.
Okay.
Elementary.
Okay, and then. I understand. Um, I understand the limitations. Um, my last question is, or maybe it's a recommendation. Um, you know, you're sending letters out to parents. But are you also talking directly to the kids that you're inviting? But sometimes they become advocates.
Well, that's a, that's a very good point, but, you know, we have to get parental permission to, to really do that.
You know, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about permission. I'm talking about, uh, talk about sharing information. Just sharing information directly with the kids. In addition to whatever letter goes out, it's, it's just a, um, am I clear? I may not be clear.
We're saying, but when I say parental permission, we wouldn't want to put something out that maybe isn't an option. Right? So we would want to get the, the parent, you know, to, um, be on board.
All, all I'm saying, and I, I guess that's why I'm, perhaps I'm not clear. I think oftentimes, um, talking directly to kids that you, you're considering for the programs. And letting them know what it is, then they become advocates with their parents about wanting to participate. You, you know what I mean? That there are different factors to share and kids on a cha- a channel.
I hear, it's a tricky time. I hear what you're saying, Dennis. I understand completely what you're saying. It's a tricky time because of, uh, people's plans and because of the pandemic. So it's a tricky time, so we just want to follow the process, but I hear what you're saying and we'll have to think about that. Julie and I, Julie and I are doing a lot of the planning for elementary and we will talk about that. But thank you.
Okay.
Bonnie, you have a question?
Yeah, and a recommendation, um, because I, I share with Jenna's this concern. Of getting out to everybody who might want to take part. And if the shortage comes in, because we have staff members who don't want to work this summer. Um, we take out an ad in the shopper's guide for retired staff people. I mean, if we've got the money to pay them. I know we are all concerned about students who can gain so much. Instead of losing education over the course of the summer. And if it's, and if we've got sufficient space for it. I think we've got to look at whatever options are there. And if, you know, if there's been a survey of all of our students, are they looking for summer? You know, activities. I hate for us to find out two months from now. That there are a whole bunch of parents who, you know, didn't hear anything at all. So I, I join, you know, with Jenna's and Carrie Ann that if we've got the capacity. That we need to explore alternative ways of getting staff. We've got enough recent retirees who might want to work this summer. I, I think we have to look at the outreach, um, because honestly, for me. Given the fact of, of the wonderful programs that you've run on campus before. If we're only addressing 100 of our students and there's the potential that maybe 300 of them. Want to have summer activities.
Thought we would have. There's more than that being invited. And, and we have done postings, at least from special education, we did a posting already back in February. To get, so that went out far and wide. I will say this, um, as somebody who has been searching for a paraprofessional for months. It's difficult right now. Um, people are not necessarily, I guess, looking for roles. Um, and your outreach that you were talking about, it's funny that you said that because I ca- I called a retiree today about, um. Her interest maybe in working this summer. So I do, I, I, I definitely hear you. And we've got to explore all options to see, um, what we can do to get as many students here as possible.
Great, because I think, I think that's where our con- our concern, well, I'll speak for me. That's where my concern is. I don't want, um, us, if we have the capacity. You know, even if we know it costs money to run things, the shopper's guide, but everybody reads it. Um, you know, maybe there are teachers who, who want to do it or, uh, are we, you know, someone who's, let's say, in his or her third year. Of a, an education program and can get, you know, some type of certification. That you're allowed to work on just the supervision. Maybe we approach some of the colleges. I mean.
If you want to talk to Sandy, you know, and, and offer your help, that, that's great. I'd like to wrap up the meeting shortly, so.
I'd be more than happy to help in any way. So, but I think you hear the urgency from a number of us.
Right, yeah. We, I, I, we are on board with that, a thousand percent. Um, I was quickly, I just gave you some information about, um, another funding source that we have, which is school choice special education increments. So I, I just kind of described that for school choice students who have, uh, are educated under an individualized education program. Um, we are able to, um, complete a form for the state. That assigns, um, an amount per hour that each service is, is worth. And, um, so that process has been completed already for this year. And it adds a considerable amount, as you know, $5,000 is the standard for school choice, uh, students. That are sent to our district from other districts. So, um, we've completed that process and it's a pretty significant source. And, uh, this year, um, our claim, I believe, is near $50,000. So I just wanted to express that. Um, and then I just wanted to let you know that unfortunately, they're not doing Special Olympics. This year, again, due to the pandemic, so we are going to try to do something ourselves here. And, um, for our students, for our athletes. So we're working on that. We hope to have it happen and I will keep you informed on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Relationship to Sandy's, um, presentation, I just wanted to make very clear. That Flying Cloud Institute is mentioned in here. I fully retired from there four years ago. I have no association whatsoever. Uh, with them, except they rent my property for three weeks in the summer. And I'm work, I work as a consultant during those three weeks. I have nothing whatsoever to do with this program. This is news to me as it is to you. I am pleased that it's going on, but just to. Assure people that, um, uh, your school committee chair is not.
your school committee chair is not involved in this at all.
We have had no conversations with Jane about this.
And Danell wanted to say something?
Just a couple of questions on the summer program. So have all the letters already gone out? Well,
Only special education letters have gone out so far.
And when would Jamie be expected to get, get, and will it be by mail?
Yeah, it, it will be by mail and then we phone, we place phone calls if we don't hear back by a certain date. So like for special education, we set a certain date. If we don't hear by then, we place a phone call to, to try to, you know, encourage participation. I, we were, we just now gathered up our list. I think probably right after the break, we'll be sending out the letters. And then we'll do the same for that.
So it's just in case anyone asks, because there is a buzz around like, oh, this is going to be some program, and it's free, and yeah, I think it's open to everybody. If they don't hear or receive an invitation by like mid-May or whatever, just assume that they, they're not eligible.
We had to put a criteria on it. So yeah, that, that would be the case. And I'm not saying, we're not saying that if we don't get participants, that we wouldn't tap the wider net. No, I'm talking to you. Yeah.
Last comment? Oh, Carrie Anne?
Thank you. Obviously, we're all concerned here about in terms of capacity and who gets to be able to participate. And I'm hearing in terms of staff capacity and also burnout and what an important issue that is. And I was hoping that as we're building a relationship with Bard College for some of our students to take advantage of some summer spots there, that maybe we could start cultivating a relationship with them, as Bonnie suggested, for their master's in teaching program for some of their students to maybe come and maybe fill some of these positions. Just to start an exchange in both directions with Bard.
Thank you very much.
We, we've talked about a lot of potential. Right now, we're just working on the early college grant opportunity and maybe the designation going forward. But we've talked about the opportunity for professional development for staff on campus. There's a lot of discussions about opportunities to, to work with Bard College in items like you're suggesting, for sure.
All right. I've already heard a couple of future agenda items. Is there? Are there any additional ones? All right, I'll take a, oh, is that your hand up or are you going to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, it was two things. One, I wanted to say this coming Tuesday Sheffield Select Board and the three remaining members from Sheffield on the school committee will be meeting to interview and select a new school committee member. So that's an update. And now I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second from Martha. And roll call vote. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danell? Jenna?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Dennis here?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane? Yes, we are adjourned at seven fifty-seven. We made it under two hours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.